All right, welcome everybody to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 8. The city council regular meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. With that, I'm calling this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Coco. Councilmember Soltis. Councilmember Harjahausen? I'm sorry. I saw you moving. Go ahead.
I'm here. Definitely here.
Councilmember Harjahausen?
I am present.
Thank you. Councilmember Simama?
I am here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I'm here as well.
Mayor Wagner?
I am here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
And I'd like to have somebody make a motion to excuse Jared for tonight.
So moved second.
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Joe to excuse Jared from the council meeting tonight. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I heard six voices, Krista.
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that, if you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Next up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
None at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to ask to move, remove new business items number two and three, the appointments to youth council and human services as our applicants were unavailable tonight. So we can have a motion to approve the amended agenda, which is removing new business items two and three.
So moved second.
It was moved by Sean and seconded by Joe to remove items two and three from the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I heard six ayes, Krista. I will call roll call votes on the other items. So with that, we will move into our public communication. We have with us tonight Angela with the South King Housing and Homeless Partners for an update. Welcome, Angela. There you are. Thank you for joining us tonight, Angela.
Thank you so much for having me. I am going to take just a moment to share my screen with you. Oh, boy. Are you seeing presentation mode or a note slide?
We're seeing presentation mode.
Oh, great. Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. That's excellent. Sorry about that. I realized I was playing around with this and it took me off guard.
Now we're seeing your note slide also.
Oh, okay. Let's see. There we go. How's that?
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay. Well, good evening. Sorry for the technical challenges. Thank you so much for having me tonight. Who would have thought a year later I'd be joining you again virtually? But I really appreciate the time to be here tonight to share an update. And the purpose tonight is to give a progress update to, we're doing this with all of the Skip Partner councils, but more importantly, get your feedback, answer any questions that you have. And so I'm going to provide a brief introduction and overview that includes Skip's mission and objectives, as well as do a little bit of a review of our 2020 and 2021 work plan, and then get into some discussion of the identified priorities for the 2022 Skip work plan. We are in the development stages of the work plan, and it's really important for us to hear from each of our Skip partners during the process. So as you go through the presentation, I'd encourage you to think about whether the mission conveys the purpose and values that are important to your community, as well as do the Skip goals convey intention and direction that you feel will help achieve Skip's mission? And then do you have any suggestions or things that you'd like to see incorporated into Skip's 2022 work plan? So this is our draft Skip mission. The mission is 10 local jurisdictions, so nine cities in King County, working together and sharing resources to create a coordinated and comprehensive approach to increasing housing stability, reducing homelessness, and producing and preserving quality affordable housing in South King County. The purpose of our mission is to be concise and specific, as well as convey Skip's purpose and values. Next is the overarching objectives. These are to create some more specific identifiable goals and standards in which to measure our value added to the subregion. And then our reoccurring, I want to go through our 2020 and 2021 work plan. And so as part of this, we have some reoccurring work plan items that you'll see brought forward. They provide kind of the framework for our work each year, and they will be part of our annual work plan on an ongoing basis. So this includes what we're doing here tonight is the development of the work plan, as well as the budget, quarterly progress and budget reports, as well as updates to some of our stakeholder groups and non-Skip partner cities in South King County. Also includes building funding support for Skip Housing Capital Fund, supporting local policies and programs that address displacement and fair housing and healthy housing. And then also supporting policies and programs that embed and track racial equity across our partners. And then we have a large body of work around outreach and education. So representing Skip at local and regional forums helps us with our advocacy goal in creating a unified voice for South King County. We also develop and hold monthly Skip Executive Board educational topics. This helps to support and inform the work of the executive board, as well as stay on top of any emerging issues or things going on in the region. We also provide education and engagement opportunities for other elected official stakeholders and community members, and we do that with some of our regional affordable housing partners, as well as Skip. We also every year will be developing state and federal legislative priorities, which again helps us with that advocate advocacy work at the regional, as well as the state level. And then we also are, took over the convening role of the South King County Joint Planners and Developers Group. This was previously a role done by the Housing Development Consortium, or HDC, and provide space for some of our affordable housing developers, as well as our city staff, land use planners, and human service staff to provide a space for collaboration and coordination. In terms of a work plan review, we've got several areas of ongoing focus during the course of 2021. This includes establishing our Skip Advisory Board. Applications for our advisory board are currently open. We're excited to say priority applications are being accepted through the end of this month, and we hope to have the advisory board in place towards the end of summer. We also are working with the executive board to go through a variety of questions and discussion items that will help to develop an administrative plan and structure for the Skip Housing Capital Fund that will help us to set priorities for how those funds are allocated. We also are working with a law firm to establish a 501(c)(3). This helps us to leverage that public investment into private and corporate philanthropic investments that require that 501(c)(3) status to invest. And then we are working through that South King County Joint Planners and Developers Group to create a tool that will help us to better understand identified barriers to increasing housing construction and preservation of affordable housing, and what that group can really do to identify those barriers, as well as address those at a local, as well as regional scale. And then we also are maintaining inventory and assessment of existing preservation programs. And so this includes this kind of collaborative and coordinating role of the local jurisdictions, what policies and programs are in place in our partner cities, and what is, what's working well, what may be maybe in need of modification, or what we can kind of learn from each other. And then areas in need of attention. This area is really about things that we need to further scope or our plan to begin later this year. These will likely have some carryover into the 2022 work plan. So this includes scoping a inventory of naturally occurring affordable housing, how we can track our affordable housing stock in South King County that is not currently have any requirements associated with it, hence the kind of naturally occurring component. We know that a lot of that is most at risk for being developed or redeveloped, and most at risk in terms of displacing community members. Also thinking about many of our communities adopting housing action plans, and as they adopt those housing action plans, we move into the implementation stages and what we can do to help provide examples of potential design standards or other requirements that will help to increase housing production and affordable housing types. We've also been working with some of our partner organizations around creating an affordable housing and homelessness awareness presentation toolkit. Right now, our focus has been on permanent supportive housing and some of the drivers of homelessness, and focusing on some education opportunities around that. This moves us into our work plan process. Currently, we are in this outreach and update to our partner councils. And the executive board has been in conversations and development of the work plan and is scheduled for consideration of adoption at their June 25 meeting. And both the work plan, as well as the budget, will come back to partners councils later in the summer or early fall for adoption. In terms of our priority setting, these are a couple areas that have been identified for priority in our 2022 work plan. So the first being working towards a balanced budget that includes both a full-time executive manager, as well as a full-time program coordinator. Currently, our program coordinator is three quarters time, and in order to really work towards achieving our body of work, we feel it's necessary to increase that to a full-time position and have two full-time staff. We're also working on developing a compensation structure for our Skip Advisory Board members. That's not currently in our budget, but it is something that has been identified to look into, looking into best practices of other advisory boards across the region, and thinking about how we can work towards that in the future. And then in terms of our work plan, we have an annual work plan process established in our inner local agreement. And we are accountable to that, but also have identified it would be very important for Skip to identify some longer-term, three to five-year strategic goals and objectives. So that would be part of our work plan in 2022, as well as furthering the conversation around preservation of existing affordable housing in South King County. So that builds on that inventory of the naturally occurring affordable housing that I talked about. Also continuing our work with our partner organizations to really provide educational opportunities like we have been doing, but specifically around better understanding the connections between Skip's mission and homeless services, outreach, and best practices. So really this tie between addressing homelessness and how that fits into our affordable housing and preservation of affordable housing across South King County. And then also thinking about equity, how we look through all of our work plan items in terms of an equity lens for development and implementation of all aspects of the work plan. So that will be a body of work that we start probably later this year, but will be incorporated into our 2022 work plan as well. So with that, I think most of you have my contact information, but just in case I have it here, and I will stop screen sharing and turn it back over to Mayor Wagner for any questions or feedback that you might have.
Jennifer?
My Windows button instead of my unmute button. Hi, Angela. Thanks for that presentation. I did have a question. I was at a presentation by the South King County Realtors last week about affordable housing, and they had an emphasis on zoning and how zoning prohibits multifamily units, apartments. And there's really been this focus, you know, not just in this state, but in the United States as a whole, to really push single-family only developments. So I was curious, I didn't see that mentioned as a driving factor, so I was curious if Skip is looking that, has considered that? And if so, what are any action items associated with that?
Yeah, thank you for bringing up that question. I think it is on a lot of local jurisdictions' minds and kind of body of work as we try to address the housing challenges. Partly because there has been underproduction of housing in the last decade or so, and that has just kind of exacerbated this affordable housing crisis. And so I would say, one of the things I touched on is looking at affordable housing programs and policies that track and embed racial equity. So that is a piece of it as well, is thinking about single-family zoning and some of the historic racial inequities that have come along with that in terms of being a very exclusive type of housing strategy. So it certainly was not called out specifically, but it is embedded in some of those policies and programs that we coordinate on at the staff level. I would say it's also exactly what you just brought up, Councilmember, is in each of the South King County cities that have been working on housing action plans, then identified as an area that needs work in terms of where can we increase housing density, increase available housing types? So thinking about what types of smaller multifamily housing might be able to be incorporated into some of our single-family zones or transit corridors, things like that, that have kind of been left out of our housing spectrum since single-family zoning came into play in the 70s. So certainly is part of that work and part of the coordination that we're doing at the staff level.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Does anybody else have questions for Angela tonight? Well, Angela, thank you very much for a very good update and in-depth. I appreciate all of the information that you provided us, and we look forward to hearing back from you at the late summer, early fall with more updates.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You as well. Thank you, Angela. All right, that brings us to our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW 42.17A.555. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. We do have a public hearing coming up to receive testimony on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments for the Lake Point Urban Village area. So if you do have comments for that, please wait for the public hearing, but now is the time to speak about any other topic that you have. And looking at our audience, if you would like to address the council, please raise your hand. Is there anybody in the audience? Yes, Paul. If we can move Paul over. Good evening, Paul. Do you have any comments for the council tonight? I cannot hear you, Paul. Are you there? I think we have lost connection with Paul.
How would you like to proceed, Mayor?
Paul, if why don't we let you try and do a connection? If there's anybody else in the audience at this time that would like to address council while we wait for Paul? Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council during this first public comment period? Seeing nobody else. Yes, Lori. Welcome, Lori. You're on. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Finally, this is not working well. So I don't know if, I've never been on one of these before, but I am just wondering if the sidewalks are going to be finished at some time soon before all of these other homes go in?
Which area are you referring to?
From Timber Lane 192nd on Kent Kangley toward Covington, and then also down to 62nd Place to Real Life Church. And then there's also some curb cuts that are missing. And we got a hold of city hall quite a few years ago, and they put buttons in down by Home Depot. But the buttons didn't work. People just drove over them. And it's very unsafe. I have a son in a wheelchair that almost got hit by a car right there at that intersection. And so I'm just wondering if, if there's something in place here that's going to make it safer for people to walk or wheel into town without having to worry about getting hit by a car?
So on Kent Kangley, we have applied for grants and funding, and the section from 185th there at Home Depot down to where MultiCare is, is scheduled for construction soon. And then we've been working with the state legislator to get funding for the rest of Kent Kangley from 185th out to the eastern city limits. And that process has not come through yet. The other sidewalks are in our TIP program for updates as we get funding to fix those.
Okay.
We are aware of them, and we do want to get those fixed.
Okay, yeah, because basically, you know, he's, he won't go into town anymore. So I think there's a lot of people that probably won't because of the safety issues. Also, on the paved walks in Timber, the Timber Lane area, anyway, there's a lot of tree roots. And there's a lot of places where you cannot go past them in a wheelchair. And then also no curb cuts.
So I would suggest on those areas, maybe going to our Covington Connects app and applying, or you know, suggesting where those are, and then that's the best way to get answers on those areas.
And Regan? If I can just take a couple seconds here to address the sidewalks in Timber Lane, those are not owned by the city. They're owned by the Timber Lane HOA for like the extreme majority of them. And so that's, that's something that would need to be taken up with the HOA.
Oh, the HOA there. Okay, we're not in the HOA there, so. But, but we're affected by it.
Right. Yeah, that, that's been a longstanding issue there, because everyone assumes naturally that the city owns those sidewalks, but they're HOA-owned in Timber Lane.
Okay, okay. And what about right there coming out of 262nd Place toward Real Life Church? Is that also considered Timber Lane?
No, that would be up to a future grant process.
Okay, okay. Well, hopefully it'll be soon.
All right. Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening?
Mayor, I would like to note, we do have two call-in listeners, and they may not be able to be heard. If they need to raise their hand, then they would dial star nine. And then when promoted, then they would dial star six to unmute. So if you'd like, we can try again with Paul.
Yes, Paul, are you able to join us now? Are you there, Paul? All right, then we will have, see if Paul wants to speak at our second public comment period. And then, like Krista said, for the dial-in, if you wish to address council, please press star nine. All right, seeing nobody else raise their hand, then we will move into approval of the consent agenda, items C1 through C4.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Beth and seconded by Sean to approve the consent agenda of items C1 through C4. Call for roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Next up is our public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding the privately initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendments to land used element and economic development element to allow an increase in the maximum dwelling units and commercial square footage development within the Lake Point Urban Village Subarea and associated amendments to ordinance number 04-14, the planned action for the Lake Point Urban Village Subarea. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with the state and local law, the public hearing is hereby declared open. And Anne, I believe you're giving the staff report for this item, or is it Ryan?
It's.
I am. If I can get my voice going. Yes, I'm one of the people that will be talking to you tonight. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen and see how this goes. Tell me if I don't have it in presentation.
Yep, we see it. Perfect.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Wagner and city council members. My name is Anne Mueller. I'm a planner here at the city of Covington. And tonight with me helping to give this presentation will be Lisa Greeter. She is a consultant with Burke. We also have available for questions, who will talk on certain topics, is Don Vodren, the city's Public Works Director, and Andy, Chief McCurdy, he will be available to answer questions too. And we also have Kim Pratt, who's a consulting land use attorney we've been working with. And of course, we have our in-house attorney Mark to help us out. So just to start off, I'm going to just do a high-level overview. So I know a lot of you know this, but our staff report starts on page 105 of 212 of the council packet. And my next slide is just in case anyone wants to know in the public what's going to be happening is I'll give a presentation, and council wants to answer, ask us questions, then we'll do that, and then Oak Point, sorry, Lake Point Covington will provide a presentation. And then the mayor will. And then the mayor will open for public testimony. It's just a little high-level look at that. So we are here today to talk about Lake Point Urban Village and just to orient people. There it is. And just a reminder that when we first started in 2011, 2012, this area was not within the city limits. Can you guys see my arrow moving? No, okay, I want to. Can you see it here? Okay, so this, okay. This is the area that was annexed. And before that, it was just within our urban growth boundary. I want to just orient, this is King County-owned property Cedar Creek. I think that's what they're now going by. The city used to own property up here, but it's now owned by by King County and is part of this full park. As you can see, we have residential development down here. So that's some, been here since the eighties. We have our newer development over here, Maple Hills. And over here is what has had different names. We call it the Northern Gateway. It's also called the Notch. So I want to just show that. And then I just found some old photos I thought were fun. These are from, I think these are from 2015 and then more recently, I think that took those last year. That's how things have changed in time. So we're here for a public hearing. The city, the city staff has provided notice for this public hearing. And these are just an example, just to show you where we, where Lake Lake Point Covington, Oak Point placed the signs and then we put notices that we also this is a look at the houses that are within 500 feet of the subarea. We provided mailings to all property owners there. We also placed notices in our Seattle Times on the website, posted at City Hall too. And we have a large distribution list. We also sent things to. So I'm going to go through the history a little bit more. Just a reminder, this all started back in 2012 with the Northern Gateway Study where the city, the city council asked staff to look at development, redevelopment of the gravel pits that was there and then the Northern Notch area. And we called it sort of the gateway to the city. And at that time, we, we hired as consultants Burke. So Lisa's been here since the very beginning of this and is a wealth of knowledge for that. We also developed after the Northern Gateway City was a look at, had market analysis in it and showed that there was a lot of leakage and if we could capture the retail and commercial and there's a demand for housing too, that would be a great place to put it. So we then worked with the public and you can see this is one of the first charrettes that took place. And we all sat around with Oak Point at the time and talked about what could happen there. What different people visualized, you can see that there were little pieces of paper. And we sort of talked about types of uses, Lake Point and Lesno, sort of their ideas and what the public thought. So we came up with that and we developed something called the Hawk Property SubArea Plan, which is what Lake Point used to be called. And we did a subarea plan and with that, we did a planned action EIS that looked at the concepts of what could go in there and the impacts. And we created a program EIS. And that was our, then we adopted the first, we, the city adopted the first planned action ordinance. And then you move forward to later, we did an annexation. And when, after the annexation, we did, we adopted the development agreement, which is a private agreement between the city and the master developer, Lake Point Covington. And we entered into that. We did some zoning map amendments. We did some boundary line adjustments to adjust the zoning to fit future parcel lines. And we did, as part of that, we did an addenda to, to verify that we thought the zoning that we are adopting was consistent with the concept plans that were identified in the Hawk SubArea Plan and that we actually now still have in our comp plan. And then we, then in 2018, we got a request from Lake Point Covington to do a comprehensive plan amendment. And it was to increase the development thresholds. And we've been working with them for several years now doing the environmental analysis. After the council said, yes, we want to look at this, staff went back and determined that we did want to do a supplemental EIS. And Lisa will talk about this in more detail. And then we've been working with them on that. And then in 2000, this year, we issued the draft. We had a 30-day comment period, a community meeting. And we had the Planning Commission public hearing, which was on the the comp plan amendment and potential planned action ordinance amendments. And then we had a council briefing and we described what was going on with the EIS. And we have issued the final SEIS and we're here tonight with the public hearing. And this is just showing what we've done, basically reiterating what I just. So we're here tonight for the public hearing. And I wanted just to share some of this with you. So it's, it's sort of a bear to get through this whole document, but if anyone, and I will post this to our website, the webpage for Lake Point about where everything is. You, different parts of this. I did want to point out that we will, and I'll touch a little bit more and show examples on, we noticed that in the comprehensive plan amendment, which was attachment C, there was a sort of a Scribner's error. We didn't fully show in track changes on exhibit. Exhibit L-7, which is in the land use element that we would like to be part of the amendment. And it just didn't show up the track changes correctly. So I'll go into more detail about that. Nothing changed substantially. It just wasn't reflected correctly. And again, Lisa, please let me know if you want to say anything. This is just sort of where we are and where we're going and what's happening in the future, which I sort of reviewed. We have adopted the planned action EIS. And then we did, we're doing the SEIS now and we're going to, we're proposing amendments to the planned action ordinance, which is basically the mitigation that was identified in the 2013. And then as recommended in the supplemental EIS that we did. We adopted these comprehensive plans. This is the proposed amendment that we're talking about tonight. And again, we will be in the future bringing to you the development agreement for some amendments and we'll talk a little bit more about that. This is the first step. There you go. So really, this is a comprehensive plan amendment. As you know, this is our comprehensive plan is sort of the foundation documents. And we talk, we include the city's vision and mission and the FW in here stands for framework goals. And then there are multiple elements in there, but they're all tied together. They don't stand on their own. They're supporting each other. And in each element, and the two that are being amended tonight are the land use, proposed to be amended are the land use element and the economic development element. And they, each one of them will have goals about what they want to do. This is an example of something that's in the housing element. And then the goals and then under that are policies. And then that document informs our regulations. The regulations should implement our policies and goals and we shouldn't, if council changes directions, that's what we go back up and change the comprehensive plan. And then we can trickles down to the regulations and our programs that we have out there. And this is just a little bit of his, showing you, this is the cover page. Some of you may still have yours from our planned action EIS from 2013. This is an example of what we took with those charrette pieces of paper that I showed earlier. And we created these concept maps. And this is the maximum one that we looked at that was contained in that EIS and in the subarea plan that, to contain the initial number that we have now currently is 850,000 commercial square feet and 1,500 dwelling units. And at that time, I just want to show that we sort of identified where we, oh, sorry, guys. We, we showed the trails that are, these are trails that are identified in our plans and King County plans. So we are going to ask the developer to develop those as they develop the overall mixed-use development in there. We identified this area as commercial. So it's been discussed as a really great opportunity for regional commercial. Here's the interchange. This was identified as, this is Dinkins Creek is right in here and there's a really high-quality wetlands in there that they will be, will be retaining and be protected. And I'll show you in the zoning, the zoning actually. So none of this commercial area is going to impact the wetlands. There's also a buffer between the actual wetlands and and the development. I want to show you, this is some townhomes we talked about, multifamily. Here's the pond that they're going to maintain there. There's always been water there. Sort of an excitement at the time is that there would be a mixture of use there. It wasn't just commercial. It wasn't just, you know, multifamily. It was going to be a mix there. And then this was some sort of the more multifamily, more townhomes. And at the time, we sort of talked about maybe these being single-family. And then these were also areas that were going to be protected. This is the green, the green belt that's going to be protected. And as you know, we actually later on established a more specific green belt buffer that wasn't reflected in here until we went and did our comp plan amendments. And we added a requirement for that to be protected. Again, I'm just trying to share, share some of this. There's a specific discussion in the comp plan land use elements along with specific policies that affect that and goals. All of the policies and goals may apply to them. It's not just these, but we did look at these and these are taken from the Hawk Properties SubArea Plan. And we put them in the, the comprehensive plan. So they're still there. I just want to show you, this is the zoning map. So this, this roughly right here, I think this has actually been amended since there's been some adjustment with the boundary line adjustment. But this is, everything in this R6 area and this parcel is pretty much going to be within the wetland or the wetland buffer. The one exception is that they will be putting a 200 4th is going to go through here, go on along this curve and then come through here. So and as part of that, the road intention and what we're, they need to do and the plans I've seen show that they will not be impacting actual wetland. They will be impacting the buffer requirement. And as part of that, they'll be providing a wetland mitigation information to the city to review when they come in for planned action consistency. So I'm just sort of showing you how that concept map came in and was implemented in code. And I also want to just address, because we have had some questions from citizens about the zoning and nothing about the zoning is actually changed with this. The zoning will stay the same in the same location as part of this. They're not proposing to change it. And I wanted to just share with you, like the RCMU, which is the regional commercial mixed-use area, it has a 60-foot height base right there, same with the MR zone. So the building height there would be 60 feet, which is about depending on the construction's type, five floors. In the RCM zone, you cannot have single-family development, but every other zone here, our MR and our R12 can have single-family. But they can also have townhomes, duplexes. So there are lots of different uses that are not changing. They've always been allowed. We allow townhomes in our residential areas to. So I just wanted to point that out. There are critical areas. That doesn't mean that they can build in there. They have to stay out and protect those. And those have been actually further clarified in our planned action mitigation measures. And again, there's a green buffer through here. That's we have some really robust plans showing in our development agreement that show the location of that. So they're not going to be, any development increase will be within the area that, that they've already established. They're not going to build in the pond. But they're going to go up, if anything. They are going to meet all zoning requirements for, you know, impervious surface. So in the MR zone, they can all, maximum impervious surface is 80%. That's going to stay the same. So nothing there's changing. I just wanted to. And we can talk more about that if anyone has questions about that. So I just wanted to go over that. So here's the actual request that they put in. This is their application they gave us in 2018. Looks very simple, but it is to increase their development. The commercial square footage will go from 850 square feet to 1.32 million square feet, which is a 55 percent increase. And the housing, and we'll go from 1,500 to 1,700 housing, sorry, 1,750 housing units, which is I think a 16, 17% increase. Let's see what my next speech says. And here we go. So here's the here's what we have now with their currently allowed to do. And we looked at with the planned action. And then here's what they're proposing to do. The jobs is based on, and Lisa can help clarify this, but it's based on a formula arrived at from the proposed commercial development. And that's what the increases, it sort of aligns with the increase in commercial development. So there's that, just sort of very simple things that we did there. Not simple, but like I'm like, I wanted, here's their amendment. So here's our existing page in the comp plan. Example here. And then they went through and we shown in track changes that they, where they wanted to request it and then how that affected total capacity and surplus that we have. And then I do want to point out, we have, we do have a correction, I mentioned briefly, this, this exhibit, exhibit LU7 in two locations, we, we did not show it correctly. And this, these numbers in here are directly related to the table above it. So the housing went up, the capacity a little bit with the change. And so that there's we haven't changed anything. We just didn't show it correctly in the document you originally got. So, and here it is cleaned up. So both of these both in the actual section two of the ordinance document as well as exhibit A on this page, LU9, I think. We'll need to update those and those will be provided in the ordinance, a clean copy if you approve it. And this is, it even up close in case you want to see it. So here again, showing the example of their first request was to change the numbers on page LU14. And it's a show in here and cross out the same thing here. There's some text and we're updating it. This is in the economic development element. And as part of this, we did a lot of the review and analysis as part of the SEIS. We took to the Planning Commission this proposal and we have a recommendation from them. We did an evaluation with staff findings, which was contained in your packet. It was within the Planning Commission packet. And the findings are in there and I can go over them briefly too. But this is a site-specific application. It's only applicable to the parcels located within the subarea. The subarea plan was approved, sort of this vision for a mixed-use urban village was established back then. That is still the plan there. I'm going to let Oak Points, Lake Point speak for themselves, but I think that in the past 10 years, they've seen the market in the past 10 years, they've seen the market change. They know that the demand for housing types and sort of an interest in living, some people want to live in smaller homes, less yard maintenance, close to the types of amenities that Lake Point is going to be providing your shopping and activities. So this is sort of like most likely the evolution of why they're asking for this change. They didn't think back in 2013 that this would be the right thing. And now that they're seeing as they've moved forward, that this is a great thing. Again, these uses that they're doing are ones they've always been allowed to do. And the threshold does not exceed what would be allowed within the zoning district. So every time they submit something, whether it's a multifamily building or commercial building, we will still check it against what the zoning code says. So they cannot exceed what the zone will allow for residential density. They just have sort of this, we've done CIPA up to a certain level. This is, this would increase the amount they could eventually build out to. And then again, the, we discussed the, nothing has changed with the uses and they have a very they have SR18, which is a sort of a border on one side. They have the wetlands to the northeast that will still be there. And right here, this shows, this is the plan that they're showing, this is a, based on the master development plan in the DA with some annotations that we that Lake Point provided us to show where they were going to be accommodating open space. And this is taken from the EIS document, but you can see this, none of this is changing. The road's going to go through and will impact the buffer. They're protecting this area as a green belt. There are some steep slopes in here. This is steep slopes and treat areas. They are coming in, they have come in with a 22 lot subdivision here. But they're planning, which is single family. And then these uses.
Anne, I think your arrow isn't showing up.
You're right. It's not because I'm, yeah. Okay. So sorry, this is the 22 lot subdivision. And then this is the wetlands. I'm sorry about that. This shows a buffer from the wetlands. And there's also a stream buffer from Jenkins Street, but the wetland buffer is larger. So we're showing that. Single family. Again, they don't have to put in a certain use, but we sort of expect to see sort of a lower density multifamily here, could be townhomes. They'll do that. And this will be multifamily with potentially commercially type uses on the first floor as allowed by the zone MR. This is the regional commercial area and it can have multifamily housing above it. And here is their sort of peninsula with the mixed use in there too. And you'll see this was sort of this is our 12 area. I, my understanding is they are thinking of paying townhomes in that area. And then this is also this is in your the planning commission staff packet that's an attachment to you. If you wanted to see this, this table is on page 116 of your agenda packet and just sort of talks about the JSON uses and compatibility. Now I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who probably have better use of her arrow.
Well, you're running it, so you'll have
Okay, that's true.
I'm Lisa Greeter. I'm a principal and planner with Burke Consulting. So I'll cover what was addressed in the supplemental environmental impact statement. We started with the 2013 document as a base, and that also served as our no action alternative. And under the State Environmental Policy Act, no action doesn't mean no growth. It means growth under your current plan. So that would be that maximum urban village alternative that Anne showed earlier with 1500 dwelling units and 850,000 square feet of development. Then we evaluated the Lake Point 2018 proposal to increase the development thresholds that Anne shared in the table earlier. We also confirmed or amended the mitigation measures that would apply to future development under the proposal. And the whole purpose was, you know, to ensure there was information provided to the community and decision makers. So I'll just touch on some of the, the process we used just to reinforce some points Anne made earlier. So the draft supplemental EIS was issued in February with a 30 day comment period. There was a community meeting held. I believe we had over 80 participants. We also received three emails with comments or questions during the comment period, and those are in the final supplemental EIS that responds to the comments. The final supplemental EIS considered the planning commission recommendations. The planning commission did recommend to approve the 2018 proposal. And the final supplemental EIS was issued on May 28th per State Environmental Policy Act rules to be available at least seven days before the action that the council may take. So we didn't repeat every topic from 2013. We focused on those topics that were important to understand with the 2018 proposal. The ones that we revisited included earth and groundwater, air quality, plants and animals, land use and plans and policies, transportation, noise, public services, which included schools, parks, fire and police services and utilities, which was sewer and water. And so for each topic, we described the affected environment, which would mean conditions today. And impacts of both the no action and the proposal. Comparing the proposal to the change above the no action alternative. As I mentioned, we affirmed or amended the mitigation measures. And then we identified any residual impacts once mitigation is applied. It's called significant unavoidable adverse impacts. So some of the updates on mitigation for earth and groundwater, we our subcontractor hydrogeologist recommended that we add a mitigation measure that addressed the timing that de-watering would stop from the reclaimed mine site. Since 1977, there has been groundwater pumping as there was mining activity. And since reclamation, there still has been some de-watering, but once that ceases to avoid a rapid shutdown that would affect the low flow during the summertime at Jenkins Creek, the idea is to adjust the timing to make sure that the de-watering or the shutdown occurs no sooner than October 1st and that it's done in equal increments for a few months to allow the stream to equilibrate. And the city would ensure compliance with that through the grading permit and inspections. So in terms of air quality, the 2013 EIS and the planned action ordinance have a long menu of potential greenhouse gas reduction measures that the applicant has to identify which ones are feasible. And of those that are feasible, implement those. The proponent did provide a list of proposed greenhouse gas reduction measures and the supplemental EIS provided an evaluation of those to show the potential effectiveness. So for example, evergreen trees or trees are an effective measure. So we evaluated that proposal from the proponent who intends to include landscaping in the development proposal. For plants and animals, we updated the mitigation measure, but largely kept those measures intact. It was any new information from the Department of Fish and Wildlife to ensure appropriate design of the wildlife crossing for land use. Anne mentioned that eventually beyond the consistency between the comprehensive plan and the planned action ordinance, eventually the city would consider a proposal to amend the development agreement. It will be to achieve the same level of growth that was studied in the supplemental EIS. So there's not a difference there. And it's just meant for consistency between the evaluation and the EIS and the planned action and the development agreement. For transportation, we evaluated the proposal with updated transportation evaluation measures. We found that the capital improvements included in the original planned action are still necessary. And that the city's concurrency process would ensure that those improvements and the development occurs in a way that matches the city's levels of service. And for public services, we addressed the training of police officers. So that as the sub area develops before the space is occupied, that there is an addition in training of officers so that they're ready to go when the development occurs. And then with utilities, we coordinated with utility providers. I'd invite Chief McCurdy, if he wanted to make any statements about the, the training of the police officers, if you want to share that now or in response to comments. Feel free.
Sure, I can briefly address it because it's kind of a complex issue. As most of you know, anytime the city wants to add a, add an officer to their staff through the contract with the King County Sheriff's Office, they have to pay for nine months of that officer's salary, which covers the amount of time it takes an officer through the academy and through field training. Once they pay that nine months, then they actually would receive that officer. So the goal with adding this in there is that once the development applications reach a certain threshold, they'll have that nine month lead up time app between submitting the application for the additional square footage until it actually is open to get those officers. They have boots on the ground. The concern we had was that if we wait until sales tax revenues from the development are able to cover the officers, then we would be having the development open and operational before we had the services available to protect it. So I'm happy to answer any questions either now or later about that, if, if it's not clear.
Thank you. So the key issues identified in the, in the supplemental EIS included intensifying the commercial and residential land uses that could increase greenhouse gas emissions as greater building space is developed. And there could be an increased demand in public services and utilities such as police and schools. However, we found that the mitigation measures, the menu of greenhouse gas emission measures and the amended measures relating to the demand for public services would, would mitigate that. What was similar among the alternatives is the amount of impervious area in the development footprint. So Anne pointed out on the concept plan, the master development plan that the critical areas and buffers will remain protected in the tree canopy and steep slopes as well. So basically the area that was already altered by the mining operation would be the area of focus for development, and that's the same between both of them. So if there's added growth, they might add a floor of building space. But as Anne mentioned, they are held to the heights of the zoning district and their development potential. While it's increased from the prior planned action is still below what's allowed by zoning. And then transportation trips are similar and we'll get into that in the next slide and talk a bit about that. But they are held to the same transportation, traffic trips and, and the mitigation that goes with it. So what's before you are the proposed amendments to the comp plan, the planned action ordinance? And just a recognition that in the future, before you will come, the development agreement and the amendments are really for consistency with all this evaluation that we've done so far. So I'll give an overview of this slide and then ask Dawn Fonderen to join me in explaining this. But generally speaking, for transportation, the change from the 2013 EIS to now is that there's been an update in the Institute of Transportation Engineers methodologies after a number of studies that show how trips work in mixed use developments. They still have to track the traffic trips through the planned action ordinance. There's a bank of trips. That trip cap is the same. We did evaluate the proposed land use mix in the 2018 proposal and tested it in the model and found the volumes and locations where mitigation were needed were still the same. And the planned action ordinance has references the city's concurrency process, which requires information to confirm those traffic trips. The, the city has reserved the trips in the model. If we find that conditions have changed, there's provisions in the planned action ordinance that allow the CIPA responsible official, the community development director to request supplemental information that's needed. So Dawn, do you want to explain a little bit more?
Yes, thanks, Lisa. Through this process, we've had questions about it. So how can additional square footage and dwelling units not increase traffic? And just a couple of points to keep in mind to best understand that. And one is not all trips are created equal. And also how are those trips determined? So let's talk about the second one. And Lisa talked a little bit on it. The Institute of Transportation Engineers or ITE has a trip generation manual that they have been basically producing for like four decades. And within that, there's just pages, there's multiple volumes that have all different types of use from fast food to sit down restaurants to mixed use to different dwelling units, basically all the different types of uses that you can have. Within that, they've basically taken data across the nation of all these developments over years, and they basically keep calculating what types of trips and how, how those are determined based on, or how, how they're generated based on the different uses. So so basically they have all of those. So for everything for square footage, those types of things for the different uses, they have basically a number of trips that are generated. So that's, that's one aspect to it. And I'll, I'll explain in a little more on that. And then the other one is realizing that not all trips are created equal. And, and I'll give some examples on that. Say that this development, you know, say all they built was a coffee shop. And I'm going to give some examples and I have no, I'm not saying that any of these things are necessarily going into this place. So just for discussion as far as examples, say a coffee shop was what into or was going to be the only thing being built there. That coffee shop, say a Starbucks or whatever was built there, that has an area of influence and a number of trips that that would gather. So typically someone from Federal Way or Seattle or something is probably not going to come to this Starbucks. There may be occasional, but basically it's draw has a certain, a number of trips that it's going to get in a certain area that it's going to draw from. Say that instead of a coffee shop being there, say that there's a restaurant there. That restaurant would probably maybe draw a larger area that it would draw from. You know, depending on the restaurant, things along those lines. Again, say that instead of that, say there's a movie theater. Okay. So again, you can see that the likely draw area for those places would be different. So those are the trip lengths for each of those trips or each of those developments. So each of those would be different. And so now let's say that you have, and you also have housing. So a trip for say a single family dwelling, that house could, you know, someone could be driving all the way to Seattle for employment. So a housing trip length can be much longer than say a convenience store, a 7-Eleven or a coffee shop or something along those lines. So now let's say that you have a mixed use, like they're, that they are planning. And so within that, you have all these different uses that have planning. And so within that, you have all these different uses that have basically, there's a captured trip between those. So say I wanted to go and maybe meet my wife or something at Lake Point and hey, how about we meet for dinner at this restaurant? We'll catch a movie afterwards, and then maybe after that, we have coffee or something after that. So the way to think of that is I basically went there in one trip. If I looked at those all separately, those would be three different trips if you just looked at the develop the the trip generation of each individual piece. But because collectively, as a mixed use, they have captured trips, or some would say maybe a word like synergy or whatever, it's not quite the, but you get the point. Is all of that's there, and they're playing off of each other, and it has a draw, and people come in for that and that. And in order to basically calculate those trips, there's an internal capture rate, and this the ITE manual allows for that for certain uses. And so if you're if you're putting those uses together, then you can get those captured rates because they realize that people are going to be coming there for multiple things. Same thing for someone that has residential that's around there, they can get a lot of their services right there instead of maybe driving, you know, further away to get those. So that's how you can get increased square footage or dwelling units is if you're strategic in the type of development that you're putting through there, and that's that's part of this process is that that through this whole concurrency and them submitting trips, they still have the same number of trips that they had before. That trip ceiling is the same. It's just now the types of use that they put in there. If they if they have the right combination, you can increase those square footages and those dwelling units. But they would have to have that combination where you your overall captured trips is reduced in order to stay within that, and those would be monitored through that process.
Thank you, Don. So Anne, if you wouldn't mind, we're going to just touch on the planned action ordinance amendments that flowed from the supplemental EIS evaluation. So the planned action ordinance is on top of the development agreement and other health and safety requirements that the city has in its code. It specifies the development thresholds that have been evaluated in the environmental review process. So those would be adjusted to the new threshold, so the 1.32 million square feet and the 1,750 dwelling units. And then the mitigation measures that were proposed for amendment in the supplemental EIS are integrated into the planned action ordinance amendments. We did also propose to adjust some of the planned action review process. There is a process where if an applicant wants to be a planned action under the umbrella, they they provided a checklist, and the city goes through a determination of consistency. And the permit review process follows the underlying permit. So if they apply for a subdivision application or a commercial site development, and they need to, the city would review their application materials to make sure that they've provided the applicable information. And there's a planned action checklist that's part of the ordinance, and the city checks that what they're proposing is consistent with the conceptual site plan that was evaluated in the EIS and the master development plan. And then there's specific criteria. The city will make sure that the uses and activities are consistent with the EIS and planned action ordinance and with the EIS thresholds and the mitigation measures. There's also a check to make sure it's consistent with the development regulations, including the development agreement and all other local regulations, including zoning. And if it qualifies as a planned action project, the city would issue a determination of consistency and the notice of complete application. If required by the underlying permit, like the subdivision or the commercial site plan, would indicate that that determination is is been issued, and it would be available during that 14 day notice of complete application period. Do you want to go to the next slide, Anne?
Here we go. Do you want me to go, Lisa? So after all of this, we took this information to the planning commission on April 1st. We can see the minutes are in your packet on page 252 in your attachment B. They voted seven to zero to recommend that the city council approve this proposal as requested by Lake Point in 2018. And also the proposed planned action ordinance amendments. So there's the motion. And then I will go. And I just is just in case someone in the public hasn't seen the the motions or the the packet that we've sent out to you, these are just verifying that we it's a legislative action that's consistent with our code, which is CMC 14.30.060. We've done all the noticing required and probably a little bit more. And these are your recommendations, and we are these are being forwarded to you by the planning commission. We did separate them out. You have your first one will be for the cop plan amendment, and I'll show you, remind you that we have some changes to that. And then your second one is for the planned action. So just again, these are the changes. This is a corrected page that shows that these two figures are correct and show the changes that we made as a result of their requests that are spelled out up here for housing and jobs capacity. And then just the next steps, we can answer questions, staff. The applicant is going to provide a presentation to you. So let me know, Mayor, how you'd like to you guys want to do questions now or wait until after?
We're in the middle of a public hearing, so not ask questions until the public hearing is closed.
Okay. So Nancy Rogers is here on behalf of Lake Point Covington. She available, she'll be providing their presentation tonight.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Lisa.
Nancy's being promoted right now.
Thank you, Krista.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Nancy.
Excellent. Thank you. And Anne, could you put up the the site plan? Perfect. Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. Again, my name is Nancy Rogers. I am a Landes Attorney with the law firm of Karen Cross and Humpelman, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Lake Point Covington, who we all, of course, call Oak Point. Oak Point is the developer of the Lake Point Urban Village. And as you've heard tonight in the last hour or so, staff has covered a lot of history and background regarding this project. I'm going to have a much shorter presentation, and I'm going to cover what we're asking for from a practical standpoint and confirmation that it meets the legal standards for approval. So again, very practically speaking, we have at Lake Point an existing approved project. A point discovered after that approval that due to changes in the ITE manual that Don Vodrun talked to you about, we could stay within the same trip cap on the external streets outside of the Lake Point development and yet add more commercial development and more housing units. And so that is why we came to the city and asked for the the 2018 comprehensive plan amendment to increase the number of housing units from 1,500 to 1,750 and to increase the commercial square footage from 850,000 square feet to 1.32 million square feet. The changes are really simple, though. That is an increase, but it is within the same project boundaries. It will conform to the same zoning requirements and development standards. It'll be the same development footprint all and all the same allowed uses as the existing approved development. What we're doing again is adding second story to some buildings, converting some potential parking lots into structured parkings. That's more efficient use of land. And the same traffic levels in terms of the external roads are going to exist. So that same trip cap that was already approved by the council several years ago with 2,578 PM peak hour trips will apply to the updated and increased capacity development that that we're asking you to approve tonight. And what that means practically speaking, again, is that it's going to be incumbent on the developer to make sure that there is a balance as the project builds out between residential, commercial, and different types of commercial uses so that we do take advantage of the internal capture rates that the ITE manual provides to us so that we stay within that overall trip cap of 2,578 trips. And again, practically speaking, what that means to the public at large is that the transportation impacts, just like the natural environment impacts and every other impact remains exactly the same, despite the fact that there is additional development coming onto the site. As to public services, and you heard from Chief McCurdy, Oak Point volunteered a mitigation offer to address cities, the city's concerns about an increased need for police services, and we volunteered to provide payments at four specified points in time as the project builds out in order to help defray the city's costs prior to additional tax revenue being generated from the Lake Point Urban Village Development. So that's in sum, the practical impact of the comprehensive plan amendment and planned action ordinance amendment that are before you tonight. Turning to the law, because I am a lawyer, so I guess I should do that. You do have legal criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment. They're found in your code. It's contained in the staff report and materials. And what is required here is a showing that the Lake Point property is suitable for the proposed development in general conformance with adjacent land use and the surrounding development pattern and with zoning standards under the potential zoning classifications. And what's fascinating to me as a Landes lawyer, I mean, to geek out, although you've already been geeked out a lot with the prior staff presentation for on the history here, is that because, of course, the Lake Point project is already approved, and this is just an incremental increase in adding development square footage, necessarily this comprehensive plan amendment conforms to that code standard. The adjacent land uses, the surrounding development standard, standards, the zoning standards are all identical. Turning then to the planned action ordinance, which is the second item before you. The planned action ordinance, as was described in staff's presentation, provides updates to match the environmental impact statement analysis, the impacts, again, incremental only impacts of the updated and increased development amount. And the planned action ordinance before you tonight also contains amendments that are addressing some procedural issues that arose, and we all discovered together as Lake Point submitted its first project for the Lake Point Urban Village, the 22 lot plot that I believe Ms. Mueller described to you earlier and is pointing to with her cursor. Thank you, ma'am. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, which it sounds like you'll take after public testimony. We'd also be happy to respond to any public testimony that we hear, should the city wish us to do so. But at this point, I'll conclude my presentation by simply asking that the city council approve both of the motions that are listed at page 108 of your council packet. So as to approve the 2018 comprehensive plan amendment to increase the development capacity of the site and to approve the accompanying minor amendments to the planned action ordinance. And again, unless you have questions at this time, that concludes your presentation.
Thank you, Nancy. And Anne, is that all the presentation now?
Um, it is. I wanted to just check in with Krista or Mark. We we did receive, and I believe it was forwarded to you, three emails from the public and a letter. We have four people that submitted comments to us and are going to be part of the record. I'm not sure at what point you normally do that, but I did want to acknowledge that we have looked at those, and we've tried to address them tonight through our presentation as well. But otherwise, I this I the only other thing is that we do keep a lot of information, historical information on our project website, Lake Point. People can go back and look at it, and this presentation will be put up there, too. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And if you can stop sharing the way I can see all of our participants, thank you. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, please give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, please press star nine. Anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel during this public hearing? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will declare this public hearing closed. And at this time, does counsel have any questions for Anne, Lisa, or Nancy? Jennifer.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first question, I think this is somewhat irrelevant, but since I wasn't part of the first decision making process, I am curious which roads specifically were part of the traffic impact assessment? Lisa or Dawn, do you want to talk about the?
I I can start briefly, and Anne, if needed, we can pull open a map, but the the city has identified analysis intersections and that need to be evaluated with with developments. It's part of your concurrency process. And so the required intersections across the city were evaluated for growth first in 2013. And then in 2018, the city's model was used again to study a number of the intersections, the same intersections and segments to ensure that where the trips were going with the 2018 proposal were similar to where we understood they were going in 2013 to confirm the mitigation measures. And Anne, I can share my screen with the map, and Dawn, I don't know if there's anything you want to share, but I
Do you want to show the Lake Point Urban Village one, or do you have a traffic one?
I have the the map in the EIS that shows the transportation study areas.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Yes, does she have a?
It should be showing up now.
I I see it. I do see it, so I'm just looking at the key to try to figure out what I'm looking at because
The green are signalized intersections, and the red are stop sign controlled, and then there's some roundabouts. And Dawn, I don't know if you want to make any any comment on, we basically evaluated, I believe, every intersection the city requires of development.
We have, we have a model that we use for concurrency and and it also is basically a it takes all the land use and places that in there, and it's a a model that we have a consultant run for us. And so if you can see that they also analyzed even outside of the Um and so if you can see that they also uh analyzed even outside of the uh the city. So that was in unincorporated in Maple Valley, uh Kent. So all of those pieces were looking at uh those thresholds. And um if those uh adversely impacted based on our level of service. Then um then there was mitigation that was associated with that. Um and that's, you know, this development is also subject to traffic impact fees and that type of thing as well. So all of those are kind of tied into our uh kind of a comprehensive traffic impact uh program.
And you'll see in the planned action um uh mitigation measures that have a list. And they show the percent of. Trips um at each. Uh and and then, as Dawn mentioned, um based on their proportionate share, they. Um they help support the the improvements to those locations.
And a list of those improvements is is part of our transportation improvement package, or, you know, like, do you stick? Like, where do you store those, Dawn? Like, wh- where's this list of? You know, because obviously the residents are gonna are gonna feel it, and so I. I don't like telling people, oh, when we get the funding, we'll put in sidewalks so you can wheel around town safely, so. Um I I hear you saying we're getting some traffic impact fees as part of mitigation, but in reality. You know, what is the impact to the people living in these neighborhoods and honestly around the city, just trying to go to existing? You know, errands and homes and stuff on our major arterials.
Uh right, so a couple of things in regards to that. One is, I think it's, is it exhibit? S or something in the the E I S, S C I S? That kind of shows what those proportional breakdowns and stuff are of those different intersections. That's one aspect.
So Dawn, I'm showing the the planned action um ordinance, which I believe the the. Development agreement is consistent with, but it basically goes through each intersection and identifies the the percent share. Is that?
Yes, and so, yes, in in some sense, it's always difficult a little bit when you get, you know. Uh I I'm really making this, you know, uh you know, simplistic or whatever, and I'm not trying to make that, you know, uh. Negative or anything, but if you have, you're right, if you have a dollar in this bucket and a dollar in that bucket and a dollar in that bucket. You know, uh it's difficult to do very much with that. Benefit that we have, though, is we can take all of those within our uh. Traffic impact fees, and you can bu- you know, combine those and and build the project, so. So to some extent, uh you you may not uh. You know, build a little piece of a project everywhere, but you are taking those funds that you are getting, and you are able to build those uh projects as you. You know, tie that with other funding that you get. Um and that's the key for grants. When you have money that you can. It's kind of like having money, though, too, like seed money into there that can also help you get some design going, which can help you get a better score in. For uh grants, things along those lines. So all of them kind of play uh. Together in that regards to help, but yes, there is a, there is a period of time where you can't build. Everything at, you know, at once, but there are um. Um there are different thresholds and stuff that are triggered um uh through.
I wanted to point out, this is an attachment D, and it's on page, the page that's on your screen right now is. Page three hundred and fifty-seven, if you wanted to look at it more, starting there.
Yeah, I also found. Even the packet at one seventy-six. I was just. And again, I know it's irrelevant because it, you know, it's already happening. Um and there is no change to the trips. But it's definitely something as counsel, we need to be very aware of. I mean, as I'm counting the amount of traffic signals that is being recommended. You know, that's one, two, three.
Just one.
Or I'm looking at page one seventy-six. It's the recommendation. The measure to fix table B one three.
On the planet has one. Signal inside the Lake Point and two roundabouts.
Yeah, this is around town for the mitigation based on the increase in traffic in the city. So when you go through and count those. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight.
Um Dawn, maybe you can add to this, but those are the required study intersections for any development that undergoes the concurrency process. And so at some of those intersections, there was less than one percent change or even a negative. Percent change, and so it was really meant to show um where they were contributing or not. Um and with the Covington Connector and other improvements, there was actually an improvement. At several intersections, and the planned action does require that improvement, does require improvement to the interchange. And um to ensure uh an appropriate uh access on one ninety-first. So Dawn, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, basically, you know, that that overall piece is a twenty-year plan that we have. You know, we're trying to evaluate based on all growth, not even just with uh Lake Point. But with any growth that we have, like they're saying with any development that comes through. We're looking at a a plan of twenty years and basically looking at projects um just like uh in Kent, Kangley, right? We're trying to get funding for that and and projects that are on our six-year tip. We also have those twenty years where identifying other projects that ultimately are needed to um to be built. And so that will, when this model was done, it's looking at all of that over that twenty-year and determining. Are they adding to that? And if so, how is that being mitigated? In other words, is that part of traffic impact fee proportional share? Or is it maybe they're they're helping with other things that you're doing by creating bypass or a different route for people to go? Which are some things we have seen with the two hundred and fourth. Uh Lake Point Boulevard that Covington Connector through there, so. So that analysis is not just for Lake Point. That's looking at um all development as far as our twenty-year plan.
Yeah, this like added fifty percent on two fifty-six is a little frightening to me. Yeah, so um I, yeah, I think we're going to um hear from a lot of residents. That they're going to see and in impact pretty. Quickly, and we're not going to be able to. So, um, okay, second question is in the, in my only one, I won't uh go on and on, I promise. In the site plan, and it's probably easiest to refer to Nancy's um presentation because it was her first slide. And but I noticed it also in Anne's and it, you know, in our packet. And in that particular. Picture of the the site plan, it shows that there's. High-density residential budding up against the existing neighborhood. But in the other kind of like schematics. We're being shown that that might be single-family, and so I'm wondering. What reality is, and if we. Approve increased residential and therefore a second story on some of the existing plans. Will the existing residents in, you know, the Covington Parks neighborhood? Have a multi-story building right behind them?
Um, so part of this, and please, I'm jumping, is the topography there too? So are are you speaking like right in?
Yeah, these yellow parts, so the yellow high-density residential, but in your other pictures. You s- the they say single-family.
Okay.
And to me, high-density is a a lot.
Okay.
Would be apartments, townhomes.
Yeah. Um they could still have single-family in here. Um we don't know, but they also could have townhomes. Um this is also, this area is um R twelve, so they could have some um multifamily units too. Um I would say topography right here is, there's this big buffer, and then it. Sort of gently goes down. I don't know if gently is the right word, but it's it's very steep here. This is sort of a bench, and then it goes down here. So in this area, um they have a height limit of, I think it's thirty-five feet. And this, this is R twelve. Yeah, this is R twelve. So, yeah, they they have a height limit of thirty-five feet. There's um up to forty-five feet if there was a slope that they were built on, but so. It's very similar to what's allowed in the R um six zones and R eight zones too. Is that sort of help address your, if they put townhomes in here? In the R twelve. They still have a height, the same height limit they would already have.
If if I could add, Anne.
Yeah.
Um there's a significant buffer there. You can see the the green space there. Um essentially, there's a significant buffer.
Sorry.
Along the side, no worries.
Um, how many is that? I thought it was only like fifty feet.
Um, in some places, it's fifty. I do think here it's a fifty-foot, and I think seventy-five over here. And this is, you know, between this with the slopes, um it's greater than that.
Yeah, so I guess I'll go back to my like clarifying question. If we approve this. Will the existing residents have have more than two stories behind them?
So right now, go ahead, Anne.
Well, I, they could have a two-story single-family house there. They could have a townhome that went up to thirty-five feet. Um but so they have that limit, and in the adjacent zone, they have a similar thirty-five-foot height limit too. So they could have a two-story. And based on construction standards, they might even be able to have a three stories um depending on the story height. Does that answer your question? So, yes, they they're not gonna.
Right.
And there's nothing about this proposal that's changing anything. That's part of the existing proposal as well. Thirty-five feet is the standard.
But I heard you say it was adding a second story in some places, and so that's what made me think, oh, we're adding a level.
Forgive me for alarming you. I was thinking more about adding levels like in in the peninsula area. Um and uh elsewhere across in the in the more commercial areas of the site. And again, none of that is about changing the height limits that apply to the existing approved development. We're not changing any of that, so. If a thirty-five-foot high, thirty-five-foot tall single-family house, which is a pretty typical height for a single-family house. Can be built today. It could also be built after these amendments are.
Okay. That's what I mean. No, thank you.
The density would be the same, too.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, um Anne and all for uh this presentation. I really do appreciate it. Uh I just want to dovetail on some of the things Jennifer just asked about um and associate myself with her comments. You know, I appreciate this, and we've heard from a number of people about um. Both their desire for this development, their um uh looking forward to this going in. Uh but they're also concerned about the impacts upon the surrounding communities and traffic, and uh we've already uh addressed some of that so far. One of the things that that attracted me to. Lake Point uh was the fact that it was a reclamation of a already disturbed site. Um I did appreciate that um Lake Point was coming in and and reclaiming an area that um. Would likely be left uh open if it weren't or abandoned, if it weren't for this development, so I do appreciate that. Uh and yet um with this expansion on the development, I have a couple of questions related to it. Um there are some mitigation um measures that are listed, but they often tend to use language like could or might. Um and I'd like to see that language tightened uh where it can be. I don't understand why we would say could um do such a thing. Um I think if the there's impacts or concerns about noise, for example. Um I think on page one fourteen, we talk about um the city could also require. I'd like to know why we wouldn't uh require those things if the noise is found to be detrimental. And then with air quality and greenhouse gases, um. So where did it say? The evaluation of measures. Can't be a minute down. I can't find what I was looking for at that. On page one thirteen, it says uh the planned action ordinance mitigation measures twenty and twenty-one provide a menu. Of greenhouse gas reductions options that will be evaluated. Again, you know, will be evaluated just means, yeah, we looked at it and we decided we we won't be doing any mitigation of greenhouse gas emissions, so. I'd like to see that that tightened a bit. Uh and then finally, on public services, I really do appreciate. Lake Point's willingness to to look at um uh costs associated with uh public safety in this area. Um I just have a question as to why we settled on seventy-five percent? Why? Why aren't we asking for a hundred percent of those costs?
I might um. Respond to some of the the questions on the mitigation measure wording in the. Supplemental E I S, we often use the words would or could during the review process, but in the planned action ordinance, you'll see those woods and could's changed to shall. So for example, on traffic noise abatement, uh we added mitigation measure thirty-three A.
Okay.
Um and it requires developers shall integrate noise mitigation measures into designs, and it gives a list. And then for greenhouse gas, because the types of uses um widely vary. The two thousand thirteen E I S um and planned action um is carried forward here. Where um developers must identify which measures they are including. And which ones they are not, and why, why they are infeasible. So they have to basically provide that evaluation. In this case, for the supplemental E I S, they did list several um that they were proposing. So we went ahead and evaluated their effectiveness in the supplemental E I S. But for each application, they have to say which ones they're including um definitively uh from that list.
Thank you. And then the public safety costs?
Um I would ask um uh. Nancy or Kim to explain the 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 schedule of the fees um that that were included.
I'll say um this wasn't an exact science, but the city did look at what does the city think the demand on police will be? Really from um zero square footage or one square foot of this project up to the current expanded amounts that they're requesting. And looked at what are the number of officers that we think the city is going to need um in general. And then we were looking at um and Chief McCarty made us very aware of that startup cost. And when, you know, the difference between it's the city having to expend those startup costs and um. And and getting the tax revenues that would cover them. So we were kind of playing with how many officers do we need? And what's that cost? And then turning that into. These uh the seventy-five percent of the startup cost of each officer, so really it was a. Mixture of analysis of how we got there. Uh Nancy, I would invite you, if you had a calculation that was better than that. By you, but it it was a mixture of how many officers are we going to need? What is the startup cost for the city? When do we think we'll get the revenue to cover it?
Yeah, and I I would agree with that. I think it was a combination of art and science. And of course, as the developer's attorney, I would also say that we felt like we had a legal argument not to do any of that and not to pay not just seventy-five percent, but zero percent. But we didn't, we, that's when we were discussing this with the city. We understood the concern, and we came up with these numbers as. A way to ameliorate the impacts that the city felt were there and felt should be mitigated, that we, of course, felt they didn't have legal authority to mitigate. So that's not what I'm arguing here tonight. We are more than happy to pay seventy-five percent. Uh but I think that that number was calculated through a a mixture of art and science, really, in a in a in a detailed conversation.
I'd like to have Andy chime in here as well. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the seventy-five percent was because the startup takes nine months, so that's three-quarters of the annual cost of an officer. So total cost of an officer for a year, nine months is seventy-five percent of that, so I I believe that was that calculation.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Beth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So um, you know, first I just want to say, I think there was a lot of great information. The packet was super complete. I mean, there, there were tons of, uh, tons of useful information. And I appreciate the, the collaboration between the city and the developer. I had a bunch of questions that I submitted uh, that I, you know, haven't had, that haven't had the opportunity to have answered yet, which I understand. There was a lot there. But I think um, some of the key things that I would like to ask is that, you know, the whole purpose of the development agreement is to ensure a bit of certainty for both the developer and the city. And when I say city, I also, I'm talking about residents as well as staff and businesses. And there was a lot of time that was spent on making that original development agreement. And it was approved in April of twenty seventeen and about four months later. That was when there was a public um, public um, statement made by the developer that they were going to ask for this add-on. And tha- that was supposedly triggered by the fact that ITE changed their trip standards and that it wouldn't add any more trip traffic than the original fifteen hundred units and eight hundred and fifty thou. And I guess I'm just wondering if that was the only reason, uh, because it's not just trip traffic, right? Uh, the supplemental impact statement also talks about additional pedestrian traffic and how that impacts the environment. Uh, and you know, we're, we're talking about greenhouse gas. Um, we're also talking about um, impact on the schools. Uh, we haven't really, we did, we get school impact fees, we get traffic impact fees. But that's the same formula we've been using so far and it hasn't been enough to sustain our infrastructure. We have roads that we need to fix. Sometimes we can get grants and we can get that seed money. That's great, but that doesn't always happen. We, we had somebody talk about sidewalks today even. And with the additional um, people in that particular location, if, if it's very concentrated, I am not, I'm still not convinced that having a more lax um, concurrency or trip, trip um, evaluation process is going, going to make things better for residents. And I think it's, it, it, the other part of this is that there is a lot of uncertainty into what that retail space will look like. And as, as, you know, I think Don did a great job explaining that not every trip is created equal and that completely makes sense. But if we're talking about a, an assisted living facility at two hundred units, that's going to look a whole lot different than a Macy's. Or yeah, it's just, we don't know. And it would be nice to have some more assurances of what, what that will look like and exactly where that will look like. I mean, we have a footprint for the regional commercial mixed-use area. However, it, we really don't know what it's going to look like until it's built and what that impact will be. There were also several um, statements that were throughout the supplemental impact statement, talking about some changes that might take place. And I think Councilmember uh, Harshhausen brought up the, the zoning um, along the perimeters. And it suggested that while originally, when the charrettes were taking place and the public um, feedback was uh, taking place in twenty thirteen with workshops, there was a desire to keep uh, single-family homes next to existing single-family home um, neighborhoods for a little more natural blend. And that transformed into townhomes um, near the existing residential. But there was also comments made in the um, impact statement in our packet that it may not be just um, low-density towns, towns, townhomes. It could be high-density townhomes. So now we're talking about going back to having higher density near existing neighborhoods. So I feel like there's just a lot of um, things that are being discussed that are being triggered by this um, ask from the developer. And there was also a, so I guess, I guess I'm curious to know what that might look like because it's going to, it's going to impact our community, obviously. And we've agreed to what's already out there and that um, is certainly going to help our community grow. That was a lot. I know, I know. But where will there be some? I don't want to say security, but will we have a little bit of um, stability both for developer and the city? This is about, and I feel like this is raising more questions than it answers um, at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I might add just a couple of things. Uh, first, um, the planned action ordinance is also meant to provide some certainty and it actually overrides the development agreement um, where there's, if there's any differences to be found. Um, it is meant to give additional mitigation measures on top of um, codes. Um, and it does um, provide for protection of the critical areas and the tree canopy. Um, and, and it keeps the development in, in the area already um, altered by the mining site. And so even if there's more pedestrians, they're located in the development area and they're not meant to be, you know, in the natural areas, for example. In terms of the, the densities, um, I think Anne mentioned uh, and Nancy as well. The zoning isn't changing from what was approved um, back uh, after the sub-area plan was, was developed. At that time, there was a discussion about um, what were the appropriate uses given um, the, the topography and, and so on. And so I think townhomes um, are a form of um, of, you know, ownership typically. And, and so I think it was that with the topography and with that being an ownership style, that R twelve was a suitable zone. So that isn't changing, the height isn't changing. The um, all the, the development agreement and the city's code have a uh, design standards um, for new development. So uh, they do have things around setbacks, landscaping, um, making sure there's enough pedestrian amenities. So that there are some standards in place that are meant to, to give some assurance about development quality. And I don't know, Anne, if you want to add anything there.
Yeah, I just want to, you referenced the um, concept plan and I wanted to talk about, as part of the process, we had the concept plan, it's a plan and then it gets, you know, put into the, the comp plan and then it becomes a part of the code. Um, and during that, this is how it actually worked. We um, because if you look at this original concept plan, this is this in the, which one are you seeing? Are you seeing the, this one?
We're seeing it as it's.
Your pointer.
That, that's your pointer. Okay. So um, so right here, for example, you're completely understand your concern about you wanted this to be residential because these are residential. And as the process, when they came in to um, ask for the rezone in this area, that's when the um, buffer got put in here as sort of a requirement. And we, I think we had some back and forth meetings while they went back and looked at that. So um, one of the reasons, again, it could still be single-family, but by providing the buffer there, they were going to make uh, the other uses that would be allowed in the R twelve zone. Now, you can still have townhomes in a single-family residential zone too. I do want to point that out. So but that, so part of it is, I understand the concern, but this could have had single-family homes backing right up to existing single-family. And now there's a buffer there. Um, so there was sort of a trade-off as we looked at that. And when it was approved, the zoning, it didn't have the same exact lines. There was some discussion about there's going to be a buffer here. I think it goes all the way up here too. So just wanted to point out, there's some, part of the process worked. We gave some buffers and then um, allow for potential for townhomes in that area.
I could just step in and address a couple of the other questions that Councilmember Porter raised. Um, I, I think as uh, Anne and Lisa just pointed out, the P A O does include uh, mitigation, clear, direct mitigation measures. Uh, the amendments, the development agreement itself are not in front of council tonight. That is the document that will come before you later. Um, so we're not actually talking about the development agreement per se tonight, although obviously we're talking about the project. Um, you had mentioned a concern about impacts on schools that was evaluated in the environmental impact statement and impact fees are certainly going to be required. You raised concerns about transportation and transportation concurrency. And you made a comment that you didn't want it to be more lax. And I wanted to assure you that there's nothing about this that is more lax. We have gone through the entire cities, the project has gone through the city's transportation model. Um, and we have this, these two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight PM peak hour trips reserved for the Lake Point project. We're not allowed to exceed that amount. That's the same amount that we had uh, in place for the original development. And in terms of overall transportation improvement, certainly within project and on some of the out, external projects, we're going to be meeting city standards uh, for those improvements within the project. There will certainly be pedestrian amenities and a number of trails and that kind of thing. Also want to make the point that the new Covington Connector essentially creates a brand, well, it does create a brand new road. It's a brand new way to uh, navigate through a portion, that portion of the city. And that um, uh, is a great benefit in terms of the uh, traffic on other nearby routes. Because when you build a new road, it's like water, water, traffic flows like water to the path of least resistance. So new road provides that new capacity. Um, I think your, your biggest concerns seem to be uncertainty regarding the type of development. And again, none of the uses that are available to be built on this site are changing with the two thousand eighteen proposal that's before you tonight. All of the exact same uses are available uh, and, and can be built. And the quality of the development that we will be built is going to be controlled by the city's development standards and design standards that are required uh, to be met here. We recognize that I can't tell you today that there's going to be X, Y, Z store in this particular location uh, because we have to let the market um, drive that. But I can tell you that the development standards and design guidelines that are in place for this development are strict and will uh, result in a beautiful and quality uh, development for the city of Covington.
Thank you. I, I, I don't doubt the quality of it. I, I've seen some of the developments and it looks great. I guess one of the things that drove that is that there was a chart back on page. Oh.
What was the chart about?
Uh, it was the compare, it's, it's the use type chart. Uh, it's, it's on page um, so I didn't reference the agenda packet. I referenced the supplemental impact statement pages sixteen and seventeen. And it, it showed housing types and commercial types in the twenty thirteen version, if you were, and the twenty eighteen version. And some of the numbers matched, but some of them didn't. And so it seemed like there was some rethinking of what it might look like. And that was a little, uh, it, it confused me a bit uh, as to why it, why there were some difference there, right? So yeah, for example, the single-family detached dwelling units originally, it's like, well, and these are all proposed. I get it. It's not, it's not set in stone, but why did we go from two hundred single-family down to twenty-two? Now that the townhomes went from four hundred to zero, now the multifamily apartments went from nine hundred up to seventeen twenty-eight, low-rise townhomes. I, I mean, like, there's a, there was a lot going on there that just seemed like, why are they that different?
I can start talking and then Lisa or Don, if you want to. Some of them, I think there's a category because actually um, townhomes has zero there. But then when you look down under multifamily, it's a type of, in the um, ITE manual, it's a type of um, of low-rise multifamily. So they, it's sort of a recategorization. Um, they went through and provided us an idea of, and they haven't committed to this, but they're saying right now, we look like, and they've actually submitted for twenty-two lot subdivision of single-family homes. They are looking at the rest of the area um, and based on what they provided, they'll have a lot more um, townhomes in there. Um, then they'll have some mid-rise apartments um, probably in the R twelve area. And then um, multifamily apartments will be focused in the M R area. So um, they're just, you know, they may have, they're going to move those around and each time they have to sort of examine it and make sure they're consistent with the code, consistent with the concurrency. I know, Don, do Lisa?
Well, I think even back in twenty, the original planned action, what they were held to was the fifteen hundred units and the eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet and the range of uses that was examined in the EIS in terms of categories and the zoning code. So as long as they don't exceed this number of units or square footage, or now with the new proposal, the increased thresholds, um, that's what they're held to, plus being consistent with what was reviewed. Um, it, you know, it's categories of uses and, and the zoning. So that doesn't, the, the allowed uses don't really change. And what will keep them um, to an appropriate balance really is they have the trip cap as well. Uh, so they have to meet the code. Um, they can't introduce a use that wasn't examined, meaning a, a non-residential, non-commercial use that, that uh, wasn't part of the proposal. So that, that, it was meant to help us analyze different mixes of uses so we could test um, you know, the, the traffic and things like that.
And it, and I think Nancy pointed out, like, if they don't pay attention to what's going on and they may not be able to actually build all of that because they've done something with um, the allowed amount in a certain area. So if they don't do something in a certain way to design it, um, they might not get there. Um, and they may, something can happen. It's a, you know, we're looking out into the future.
So, so if I can ask another follow-up question to this then, and I, I apologize, everybody, if I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we have all of this. We're talking about trip counts based on use. And so in the original twenty thirteen, there's two hundred single-family homes. And my guess is that a single-family home is going to generate more traffic because you're likely to have at least one or two cars, you know, you know, maybe teenagers. That's going to generate a lot more of a trip than somebody that might have multifamily apartment where it's going to be close to the transit center and so on. Am I right? Or, or so would it make it, would it make the trip count less if they went with these twenty eighteen hypothetical uses?
I can speak to that a little bit. Um, a single-family dwelling unit creates one PM peak hour trip. A townhome multifamily, I think it's like, if I remember right, I'm, I'm going off the top of my head. I think it's like point six of a trip. So they're close in that regards. And so, and some of the terminology as far as with the, the manual has changed. And so some of those categories between the different uh, trip generation manuals, there has been some uh, changes in how they, they labeled things uh, in that. So that's a little bit of why some of the uh, differences between the two, twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen um, is trying to uh, have in it, like uh, Lisa was saying, having a mix that we can test to see how that, could that work, basically what their parameters and what they're thinking. So um, that was just to give a little bit more as far as those differences in terminology and then some ideas as far as what those trip rates and stuff um, are.
So hypothetically, what happens when everybody wants to go to Costco at, on Saturday more, Saturday at one? It doesn't really matter where they live. There's going to be more vehicles that are trying to get out of Lake Point and head into town. Not everybody that's living in Lake Point is only going to stay in Lake Point.
Right. And those evaluations were done. Right, and those evaluations were done as part of that analysis. You have to keep in mind that, that, that um improvement for a Covington Connector, when we did modeling even before um they came in, um, that was some of the biggest benefit as far as having alternate uh to help with Kent Kangley and that traffic as well. So, uh, keep in mind that there are some, uh, just with that facility in itself makes a huge impact for other circulations around the city. Um, and that's some of the, the modeling that was done as well, seeing that uh makes a huge difference as far as uh Kent Kangley and how people travel uh with that roadway.
Mayor, can I uh just mention something to council member reporter? So Beth, the questions that you emailed in, I, I did send those to sta- staff, so they are prepared to answer those questions. I know you've asked some of them. There obviously wasn't time to get them back to you, just receiving this, this afternoon, but yeah, they are prepared to answer those if, if you have additional questions.
Uh, no, 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 that's, I wasn't sure if they were going to have time to answer them or not, so.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else having questions at this time? All right. Thank you, Anne, Lisa, Kim and Nancy and Dawn and everybody for your um presentations on this item. Council, before us, we have two ordinances. We will take them separately for possible adoption. The first one is to adopt an ordinance relating to amendments to the land use element and the economic development element of the city's two thousand fifteen, two thousand thirty-five comprehensive plan. The city clerk shall transmit a copy of the comprehensive plan amendments to the Washington State Department of Commerce within ten days of the council's final adoption. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move. I would like, oh, pardon me.
Okay, it's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Joe. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
My concerns are, you know, back with the, the first one, and it sounds like they, these changes are not, you know, changing any anything that would uh impact our residents, so um carry on.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
I think everything that could be said has been said. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Joe. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Beth, you have your hand up?
I do. I just have a, uh, asking for a point of clarification. We were talking about not necessarily voting on the changes to the development agreement. But if we adopt the ordinance, the development agreement will follow.
Correct.
And it, and it will be, and it will have to be consistent with our changes to the comprehensive plan today.
From my understanding, development agreement comes back to us later this fall.
But we can't approve it today and then not approve it later. This is the time to do it, right?
No, we're not approving a development agreement. That doesn't come to us till later.
I, I think Beth, is what you're asking is would something different come in the development agreement than what you're considering tonight?
Well, the development agreement is written into our comprehensive plan, so if we update our comprehensive plan, wouldn't we?
It's not in the comp plan.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think you're on mute.
Um, so the, it's a, the comp plan is a city document, a policy document that they applied to do this. It's a private agreement, the D A, and it um is what, they vested with some I things in there. But that, you have an opportunity to look at it um in, in the future um to see what changes they want to see implemented. And so you, you will have an opportunity to look at it. Um, they also, these changes um aren't reflected in the D A. So they wouldn't actually be able to exceed the eight hundred and fifty, fifteen hundred housing units until they uh did the D A and got the mutually agreement between you and Lake Point Covington. It's a standalone document. They all work together.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? I will be um in favor of the motion. Um, we are not changing any of the zoning. They're not asking for that at this time. This is just to update the amendments into the land use element. I will call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Nay.
And I vote aye. It passes five to one. Next up is to adopt an ordinance relating to amendments to ordinance number four dash fourteen. The planned action for the Lake Point Urban Village Subarea. City clerk shall transmit a copy of the amended plan action ordinance to the Washington State Department of Commerce and Department of Ecology within ten days of the council's final adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Christina and seconded by Joe to adopt an ordinance relating to amendments to ordinance number four dash fourteen. The planned action for the Lake Point Urban Village Subarea. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, um, the two go hand in hand. Uh, we've been waiting a long time to see Lake Point happen, to get approved, to break ground. We're, I, I think all of us are extremely excited uh to see this move forward. Um, and when I think move forward, I, I want to see the best thing um erected in the place of Lake Point. Um, and I do think this is in favor. It does not, again, it does not violate the trip counts, the, you know, the boundaries, the footprint is not violated. We are still within um the measures of, you know, two thousand thirteen. Naturally, zones change. We've changed so much since two thousand thirteen, so I believe documents have to change with that. And I'm just excited to see where this goes and hopefully our children will be able to really reap the benefits of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, uh, we've been working on, on this since before I joined the council. But it's, it's not that we've been working on it. It's that these plans are not, we're not building out. We're building up. There are ap- parts that may inconvenience us in the short term, but in the long term, it'll be, it's going to work itself out. I believe that we're, we're not doing anything to remove the barriers that we've already put in place. We're work, we've been working hard. This document has uh taken a lot of time for us to make sure we get the right things going. And we have the right ideas in place. As you could tell, my son would like me to be done soon, so I think he's trying to tell me to stop talking. But uh what it really is, is that we're working hard to make sure that what happens in Lake Point is what's going to be the best for Covington. Five years, ten years, fifteen years and twenty years down the road, and then twenty years after that. Because what's going to happen, this is going to be the crowning achievement in the next twenty years of South King County. And we want to make sure that what it does is make everything better for us all. And I believe that's what we're do- trying to do here.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, I'll call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Nay.
I vote aye. It passes five to one. Thank you all very much for a very good discussion on this item during our public hearing. I greatly appreciate all the presentations that were given and very well done. Thank you. Look forward to the development agreement coming back toward, to us at a future date. Next up, we will move to new business item number four on our agenda because we removed two and three. It is to consider an appointment to Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. If I can get my computer to work. Does council, we did have one interview tonight. Does council wish to take any action tonight?
I move to appoint David Scalabrine to the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission.
Second.
Been moved by Beth and seconded by Jennifer to appoint David Scalabrine to fill position number thirteen on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Beth, would you just like to um speak to your motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I really liked uh the experience that David would bring. He's, he's been around the block. He has experienced a lot of uh culture and a lot of different areas. I think that's uh extremely helpful to, um, and a different perspective. And um I like what he had to say about creating um like an atmosphere and a culture of safe space for people to discuss and bring people together on, on issues um while continuing to promote um equality and, and celebrating people's differences instead of having it be a dividing factor, so.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, um, I really appreciated that he saw a need. Um, he's, you know, moved back here after growing up here um eleven years ago and uh was inspired by um what he was seeing in the community. And I, I think that speaks volumes and also obviously i- is why we so, see so much volunteer experience on his resume as well. Um, he's clearly a doer. Uh, I really appreciated his, his comments about um actual action. Um, that, having been parts of lots of groups. Um, people love to just talk or love to complain, but action is what it's all about. So I fully um recommend him for this commission.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to appoint David Scalabrine to fill position number thirteen on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission with a term expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. I will call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous, a six, zero vote. Next up is to consider a resolution adopting the six-year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven Transportation Improvement Program. Bob, are you giving this update? Is Bob with us?
Sorry, I'm a little delayed here. He's moving over.
Welcome, Bob.
I am here, I promise. There I am. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is just a recap of, of the public hearing we had on May eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, no public comments were made during the public hearing. Uh, council suggested staff uh lower the hundred and eighty-fifth extension project on our priority list. Uh, move up the five sixteen widening projects in the southeast Wax Road up the list. And they also agreed uh that we could put the Rectangular Rapid Flash and Beacons Project uh on the list as well as safer routes to school. And we should be hearing more shortly about the safer routes to school. Uh, Mayor Protem also suggested that we put southeast two fifty-six uh paving towards the western city limits. Uh, we had a little bit of reservation in doing so because we would um, we essentially be earmarking uh twenty twenty-two funds. Uh, and we currently don't have a funding source for that. Uh, so we may want to discuss either uh other methods for, for funding uh two fifty-six paving out there, uh which could include T B D or the general fund. Uh, but all that said, uh, I just wanted to throw in a little tidbit uh about the Covington Connector and just a quick reminder that uh the city has received uh thirty million dollars in grant funds to build that road. And I promise you, uh, I am not that good of a grant writer. So it has to do with quite a bit of lobbying and, and political will. And that the developers also will probably throw in about ten million dollars uh to that project as well. So that's a forty million dollar project that's been pushed forward by many people. Uh, with all that said, uh, you can ask questions now or you could uh pass the resolution or uh you could instruct me to revise our current six-year tip. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Joe?
Well, I wanted to pull a Mark Lanza and, and say this before Bob uh got up here. But I, I moved to pass resol- a resolution adopting the city of Covington, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-seven, six-year transportation improvement program.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass a resolution adopting the city of Covington, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-seven, six-year transportation improvement program. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, uh, so I'm going to start off with the easiest part about this. Uh, if we look at our blue sheet, the first line says it all. The city is required by R C W thirty-five dot seventy-seven dot oh one oh to uh annually prepare and adapt a comprehensive transportation program by July first. So we're, we have to do this. Uh, we've only got three weeks left to do it, so uh there's that. But honestly, it's, I think we, every year we do this, we have great insight on what's happening with our tip. We also have new ideas on how we can improve it. So I think we're, we're doing a great job. Uh, as I was telling Regan this morning, I enjoy looking over the tip yearly so I could see what we've crossed off, what's getting crossed off. And then hopefully in the near future, we're seeing more and more crossed off. And so we're having to actually search harder for projects to do. Uh, and that's my goal with the tip is that we have to search hard for these projects. So uh, we'll get there one of these days. I do want to say that thank you to the staff for putting it together. And Bob, I appreciate your, uh, your best Ryan Fitzpatrick impersonation with your beard. It's, it's looking great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Um, yes, uh, thank you for making the changes as requested. And Joe, it's just going to get longer, much, much longer. Clearly, you didn't read that packet all the way down. There's a lot of improvements needed. So, um
One day, one day, one day we'll have to search.
We'll be dead by then. Um, yeah, so I appreciate the, the great listing and the prioritization. It helps keep us focused and gives us a, a list of funding to go after. And it's necessary, but al- also very helpful, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Beth?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to um, to thank Bob and your team for, for re- revamping that. And I know that you mentioned item number, um, you know, the two fifty-six paving. But um, we've already done a little bit of work there, so it'd be helpful to move that, move that forward if we can make that happen next year. Um, but anyway, yeah, I think it looks great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll look at that further or maybe come back with a decision card or another route. I'll talk with Regan and Dawn about it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to pass a resolution adopting the city of Covington, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-seven, six-year transportation improvement program. I will call for a roll call vote. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It passes six to zero. Thank you all very much. Bob, thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you all.
That brings us up to future agenda items. Looking at our agenda, we do not have a six o'clock special meeting. So our council meeting starts at seven that night. Does council have anything that they would like to bring up to a future council meeting? Beth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it might behoove us to, to take a look at our growth targets. I know that that's supposed to be turned into the Growth Management Planning Council on the twenty, by the twenty-third when they have their meeting. Um, and whether or not that changes what, what the city has, has submitted already. It might be worth just looking at our, at our growth and the impacts throughout the city of Covington. it might be worth just looking at our, at our growth and the impacts throughout the City of Covington. Would be nice to try to do it next, at the next meeting if there's room on the agenda, but.
Is there anybody else wishing to bring that forward? I know that, um, Regan and I spent a couple of years working with the PSRC to get them to pass where we're at now to a large city along with the City of Bonnie Lake.
Sure, I think it's always helpful for council to, uh, be in alignment with the, the growth targets. I think it's a great idea.
I'm always for talking about fun things such as numbers, so why not? Let's have some fun.
Okay, Regan?
Can I just clarify what exactly we're asking to be brought forth, just the, what the growth targets are? Or, um, what, what, what should we prepare to present to council?
Well, I think it's as much about a discussion if you wanted to bring forth the, um, the numbers that were originally presented by PSRC and the Growth Management Planning Commission. Um, taking a look at the, the development, uh, map and what we already have vested versus, you know, how that ekes into the number that was presented and, and what that might look like so that we can, um, so I guess actual figures of where we're vested and where we think that, that growth will, the rest of the growth will come from, from that number from the forty-three-ten and see if that's something that we want to shoot for or ha- have a discussion with, with council on that. Does that make sense? I'm not sure.
No.
No?
Ri- Ryan, do you have any thoughts there?
Thank you, Regan. What we could do is we could provide the information that we submitted, uh, on behalf of the city to PSRC. And what we could do is take a look at the information that we have based on our historical, uh, data. But if you, if you look at the numbers that were allocated, they're, they're fairly in line with how Covington is supposed to grow over the next thirty years. Uh, it really isn't that much of a difference in the trajectory of things based on just how, uh, South King County is moving forward. So I'm just, uh-
Well, and I, I guess I also think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering how beneficial that would-
Well, I, I think it's also, I think if there's a way to figure out what that financial impact might be, based on what average home values might be. I mean, I know a lot of it's like unknown, but I think it's helpful for, you know, moving forward to figure out what the impact might be on our current residents if growth happens the way it is and what that might look like for future residents as well.
So, so looking at that forty-three-hundred, um, growth target, what impacts will that have on our residents when that entire number is built out?
And along the way, I mean, every time growth happens, we like to think that growth pays for growth, but it doesn't ever, it doesn't completely pay for growth, and then it ends up having, it, it's kind of a waterfall effect. Um, so I think just looking at, looking at some of those proposed scenarios and how it might either help or, I mean, um, depending on what type of buildings go in, how that might, maybe it's going to have a positive effect.
Yeah, so a large portion of that growth, as you know, is what the council just adopted tonight at Lake Point. Um, so we, we had a large discussion on that, and I think to evaluate, I, i- if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, it's going to take a considerable amount of work and studies. Um, it will take some traffic studies, it will take, um, a lot of housing studies. So it'll be a considerable, uh, considerable cost as well. Um, and so that's something we can do. I just want to make sure that's what I'm getting from the council that they're asking for tonight. And, and it won't be at the next meeting. I'm sure this will be a several month project.
I'm not willing to spend extra funds at this time. We have projects going on already.
We do, but I'm assuming all of those have been done already, right? I mean, shouldn't, wouldn't that have been done to determine whether we could really take that on? And this is, this is what the discussion would be about. It's not like we have to discuss it now, but I-
I, I just want to make sure we bring back what, what you're, what the three of you that asked for this are, are expecting to have brought back. Um, so maybe, maybe what we could do then is at the next council meeting, just, we won't have much prepared to staff other than what our growth targets are, um, and the capacity study. Because I think we have that, right, Ryan? That was done in two thousand thirteen or something like that.
Yeah, we have.
Two thousand fifteen, a capacity study that showed what our capacity is. So we could show that to council and then council could discuss if they want to go forward on anything like that. Does that work for, I think it was Joe, Jennifer and Beth?
I think that would be helpful and also, um, how much of that is Lake Point? Like you said, that is a large chunk of it. And I feel like I were, I recall seeing those numbers because I remember even thinking, oh, most of that is Lake Point. But, um, I think it would be helpful to kind of circle back on that, so we all have a really good idea of, um, of how much more growth is expected, especially given those, you know, again, I'm going to keep going back to the traffic, traffic because that, my job is to serve the residents and, um, that's their number one deal. And so I really need to understand why we make the decisions we do twenty-year, knowing the impact um, and why we're doing it. So any information that, um, we have to explain why we support these certain growth targets and what we're doing to ensure that everyone is benefiting. You know, ev- everybody, so that, that's what I would like to see. So anything you have, I don't want a ton of additional work and studies. And that, like Beth said, it, stuff was already done to come up with that number, so let's see that, right?
Sure, so I'm looking at the next agenda. We can fit it on there. The question is, we have to have all that information done in the blue sheet presented or submitted. I think Krista is that in the next couple of days.
And it's not important to me to be on the next agenda.
Okay, if, if that's not, and if that's not important, then, then that'll give us time. Otherwise, I was going to, s- s- sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Um, my apologies. I just want to make sure council is aware that under this section of council rules to add something in a meeting to a future agenda, it does require approval by the council, which would require a majority of council to make that approval. And with only six of here that are available, if it ends in a tie, then it would not be moved forward as an approved motion. So there needs to be four people to do that. Otherwise, there's an entirely separate process for adding things to future agenda items. So it can go through a consideration process.
So this, so I think what Mark said, at this point, there's only three that have agreed, and we need four. Is that right, Mark?
That's correct.
Okay.
In all honesty, all I'm looking for is I just want to know how these numbers are determined. Because when we first were told, uh, these growth, growth numbers, I, I just wanted to know if there was a dartboard somewhere at PSRC or King County, and they chose a city and just threw it or if it was highly complex math. And so I just want to know how these numbers are, come about. Now granted, the dartboard idea is a cool idea, I think.
Well, I ca- I could probably speak to that, uh, council member. The, uh, the growth targets were taken by about four rounds of study, uh, by the county and by the city, uh, providing pipeline projects, providing an assessment of area that hasn't been built out yet, minus critical areas. Uh, the future considerations of the downtown, uh, the Lake Point, urban village subarea and other areas surrounding the community that haven't been developed yet. And that was the number based on the zoning regulations and the potential future growth of the city. So that's where it came from.
So that, that was a quick, quick and dirty, uh, explanation. I appreciate that, Ryan. So right now, we've got, we've got three council members. If there's one more that agrees to this, we can bring back something, um, in a future agenda.
Yeah, I'll throw, I, I, I'd agree with you. I'd just like to see those numbers as well.
Okay, so that's four. So we'll, we'll put something together that, that has what our growth targets are right now. We can discuss the capacity study that was done to show what capacity we have, what portion of that, uh, Lake Point will, will potentially fill up and then how our growth targets are determined. Does that sound good? To the four of the, okay, all right.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we'll move into council staff comments. We'll start with Andy.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Andy. Ethan, is Ethan here tonight? Don?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, are you filling in for Jenna?
Uh, yes, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Casey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A lot, lot going on tonight, so thank you for, um, for those deliberations. Uh, just a reminder, I sent out the Tri-Cities, or it's not Tri-Cities, the joint meeting with the Kent School District, uh, agenda that we had in place last year. Some of those issues are still pertinent, some may not be. But, uh, Council reporter sent in some good requests. We are going to add a discussion on SRO as well, the School Resource Officer to that. And then if you have anything, please get those to me, uh, or Krista by, uh, the end of this week, some potential items. And I don't know that everything will make it on that agenda. And it typically turns out that the school district does not submit any agenda items. They usually all come from the city. And they are usually asking for information from the school district. So we will submit those to them and see what they're willing to, um, to present that night or able to present that night. Um, and the next item I want to talk about are ARPA funds. Um, we had originally, uh, it was determined we'd receive around four million dollars. However, um, we received notification yesterday that that number has increased to five point nine million dollars. It's a huge increase. Um, that, that'll be very helpful to the city. We do have, they're, they're requiring that the count, the, the council, the city accept, uh, those funds, but it has to be prior to our next council meeting. And so just if I can, um, get some head nods to see if the council will accept five point nine million.
Uh, ye- yeah, I agree.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, if you can't get five, if you can't get six, five-nine is fine.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. I think that was, uh, consensus there. Um, we'll move forward on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Mark?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Wagner. There's no executive session tonight, and I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Krista?
Yes, um, as you mentioned, we only have a regular meeting currently scheduled for June twenty-second. I do want to confirm with all council members that it is showing accurately on your calendar just because we've had some scheduling issues with our outlook. So if you can please check that and let me know if it's not showing. And then the other thing that I have for you is I just want to get council consensus if you would like to reschedule the two applicants that did not show up for their interview tonight.
Sure.
Yeah, they said they wanted to reschedule?
I have not heard from the applicants, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity if you would like to give them a, a second chance. It's up to you.
Yeah, we don't know what happened. It might be something.
Okay, okay. So I'll work with Joni. Um, it looks like she may need to schedule then, then for, um, June twenty-second prior to the regular meeting. So you may be starting as early as six-twenty that evening if they both agree to reschedule.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Krista. Sean?
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Thanks, Sean. Christina?
I'm all good, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I just wanted to thank staff for being so well-prepared and answering, um, all of our questions. And, um, yeah, it's fantastic to work with you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
Nothing.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
I think you, yeah, I, I want to, uh, echo what Jennifer said. I know that there's a lot, there's been a lot of information, a lot of things going on. And we have a super busy schedule this year and probably, probably the very, uh, long future. So thank you very much for all of the support and the information, um, and especially to, um, Krista who's been juggling everybody's schedules and trying to add and subtract meetings. Appreciate the, the effort there.
Thank you, Beth. Um, I, yes, I really appreciate the staff presentation on the public hearing tonight, but I also really appreciate council's deliberations on this and the questions that they asked. It's nice to hear everybody's opinions and get answers to those questions. The only other thing I was going to bring up is I did a mayor meetup. I guess it's been three, four weeks ago. Um, Sean and Jennifer participated in that. I thought for our first one, it went extremely well. Um, it was great to have all the public show up and ask questions and the ability for them to free, uh, freely speak. So, um, I'll work with Krista and Carla to schedule another one, um, in the near future. And I'll ask two other council members to, um, join me, because we only want to have a total of three of us, so we don't have a quorum. Um, and with that, we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are not, our dr- comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in city hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council during this second comment period? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will call, and there is no executive session. This meeting is adjourned at nine forty-eight. Thank you all very much and have a very splendid evening. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.